Regular city council meeting for Tuesday, July 16th, 2024. To order and welcome all of our guests this evening. Would you, first of all, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I call the Pledge of Allegiance to the Library of the United States of America, the Native Republic for which it stands, one nation under our law, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
J. David Reed.
Present.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Judy Ann Files.
Present.
Doug Lasbelle.
Present.
Ed Yuliberry.
Here.
All city councilors are present.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, pro tem, do we have any changes or additions, additions to the agenda?
Yes, sir, we do. And to explain that, we will all turn it over to City Attorney Chris Dowsey.
So there is one addition to the agenda. It will be under number 12. It's for what was discussed at work session, possibly bringing about a ballot question for an increase in the hotel room tax. We are required to let the county know 100 days in advance, and this is the last meeting before that 100 days would toll. So that will be added to the agenda, and I will speak more on it later.
Next item on the agenda is the call for public comment. I will not go through the normal dissertation for, and instructions for public comment unless there's a show of hands of those wishing to make public comment. All right, there's a few of you out there, so let me begin by saying, "The call for public comment agenda item is a time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concerns and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action will be taken on the matters raised during this time. Comments made during this time should be addressed to the council and pertain to matters of at least general importance to the city and its operations. Please be aware that neither city council nor city staff are expected to respond or engage in discussion or debate. Please refrain from any personal attacks and disagreements, personnel and employment matters, the use of profanity or ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented slurs, as they may be considered disorderly conduct which violates state or local law." And I would like to add one admonition of my own prior to proceeding with public comment. And that is, ladies and gentlemen, I think we all know what we've experienced as a nation the last few days. And I think there, hopefully, there is an effort on the part of all of our citizens, regardless of whether you are a Republican, a Democrat, or an independent, or any other stripe, to gain and regather civility within our nation. So I would simply ask that in addition to the ordinary admonitions here, please keep that in mind while you're making your comments this evening. And with that, I'll take the first comment.
Thank you very much. My name is John Brown. I live in Montrose. You, the board, had put out a notification that they were looking for information from the citizens, planning on being open and totally open to, for the community, and to have community inputs to drive the avenue or the direction of the city council. Well, since May, March of 19th of this year, almost every city council meeting has been inundated with persons who wish to have Montrose become and declare, the city council declare, Montrose to be non-sanctuary. Or, if you prefer, a different form of notification, that's all right, too. But the most important factor is, is that the cities that have not declared that, and as Montrose is becoming that right now, we are being inundated with illegals. It's not an immigration problem. Immigrants are always been welcome into this country. It's people that are jumping the border, that are starting off as an illegal before they come in to take away somebody else's job, but more importantly, before they start taking away money that's earmarked for other agencies and other purposes. Denver is a prime example where they've had to cut back their police force and their schools for the increase of people coming in. They're still spending more money, and their health issues. We need to avoid that problem for Montrose. We need to keep Montrose Montrose. There is an inevitable amount of change that will happen, because if we don't change, we're going to die. But we can regulate how we generate that change. We need to make that change in a direction that's going to help the citizens, the legal citizens of this county and this city, to come forward and create a harmonious group cropping like we've had. My wife is the fifth of the Montrose generations in her past, and she has four others in front of her, and she would like to see Montrose remain that way as well. My personal opinion, I came here on, on purpose in 2017, and I love Montrose. This is the only place I've really wanted to go after all my years of travel. So please, you guys can, if this council could vote for a resolution.
I have 20 seconds, sir.
If the council could vote for a resolution to make Montrose a sanctuary city, we would appreciate that. It'd be good for the county, for the town and for its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? When you come forward, please state your name for the record.
My name's Dr. Jeffrey Krebs, and I practiced here in Montrose for 24 years. Prior to that time, I was in the Navy Medical Department and a naval officer. And over the years, in private practice and as a naval officer, I learned a lot of lessons. And I like to think that I garnered some experience and ability to see the right answer. And it's, it's obvious to me that in our town today, I think the biggest issue is not having our town a declared non-sanctuary city. Maybe you could call it this way, that Montrose is not a sanctuary city. That makes no difference in my mind between a non-sanctuary city and that other definition. But please, for the benefit of the future of this town, and people that are going to come here, and kids that are going to be here, please, please, make a resolution and change this ruling for the future of our town. I'm asking you, please, to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to go next?
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to be here. I've got three or four items, but I think in lieu of what just occurred in a small town in Pennsylvania, I think my plea tonight has to do with, we've got a lot of rooftops in Montrose, too, and we don't want something to happen here that happened there. There are literally hundreds of taxpayers in this community. I'm only one, but I can tell you, I represent many, many, who have asked me to speak for them. And I'm once again and again asking you to formally declare Montrose to be a non-sanctuary city. This seems like it's continuing to fall on deaf ears. I don't understand. Maybe I'm uninformed of what's going on behind the scenes, but this is a very critical objective for the people that live here. It's not just me. I know, and I understand it takes the mayor to take this leap, and we're looking for either a ballot referendum, or whatever it takes legally and ethically to pursue this. And there are literally hundreds of people that have resolved in this community, I'm sure you've heard many of them already, to make this a big deal, because it is a big deal. And I would hate to be sitting here a week or a month from today, knowing that we could have done something about this and we failed to act. So again, my plea for not only myself, but many others.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Olinghouse. I was here at the previous meeting, asking you the same thing. Please declare us a non-sanctuary city. My husband and I came over here from the other side of the mountains to have something different than what goes on over there. And it is a beautiful place over here, and we are so glad to be over here and do not want to see it change in the wrong way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Is there no one else wishing to comment? With that, I'm going to close public comment, but I'm going to take a moment, kind of out of the ordinary, to make a statement so that, once again, that it's clear what we are and what we are not as a city. The following statements that I am about to make are based on fact, not innuendo, not rumor, and not fabrication. And they are based as well on law. Number one, the city of Montrose is not a sanctuary city. Is not a sanctuary city. By default, legally, we are a non-sanctuary city. By default, legally, we are a non-sanctuary city. With that in mind, as a community, we have no intent or desire to become a sanctuary city. That is not even within our thought processes. So for anybody who believes that to be the case, please disregard that. I'm also informed by the Montrose Police Department and other resources that there is no credible evidence of any increase in the number of undocumented migrants into the Montrose community. Now, that is based on fact and resources, reliable resources and intelligence. You may also wish to contact the Montrose Department of Health and Human Services to further verify my comments regarding the number of undocumented migrants. And with that in mind, to the extent that you think we turn our back and don't listen, we do. We pay attention, and we inform ourselves, and we inform ourselves for the best interest of all of our citizens. We turn our back on no one, but we represent everyone. With that in mind, I will finally close public comment. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, city council consideration of the minutes of the July 2nd, 2024 regular city council meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of the July 2nd, 2024 regular city council meeting as presented.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion and a second. Please vote. That's, no, it didn't. Next item of business, item number seven, city council consideration of tap fee waivers totaling $121,737.80 for the Volunteers of America Rendezvous Development Project at 2366 Robbins Way in Montrose, Colorado. And for that, I will call on Community Director Jace Hawkewell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My mic working? Test, we're good. All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is an item I presented at work session a couple of weeks ago, but I will, for the public here, as well as folks online, and just for the record, I'll go through a similar presentation. Don't have anything to show you, but the item I do have in front of you is a utility fee waiver request for the Volunteers of America Rendezvous Project located at 2366 Robbins Way. This project will offer 52 affordable units for residents 55 years and older geared to making 30% to 60% of the area median income. This equates to a salary of approximately $18,000 to $42,000 per year, per individual, for individual residents. The project consists of the renovation of 30 existing units, known as Pavilion Gardens, as well as the construction of 22 new units, new building, on vacant land that's southeast of the kind of current campus. The total project cost is estimated at $22.5 million, and construction is expected to begin fairly soon here. VOA is seeking utility fee waivers for the site's related water fees for the project totaling estimated $31,814.80, which include water meter charge, water capacity fee and unit charges, and a water fire line. Related sewer fees for the project total an estimated $89,923, and those include the sewer tap fee, capacity, and unit charges. So this comes out to a total request for utility fee waivers of $121,737.80. One thing I'll note, and I noted it in work session, is that this is not necessarily a waiver in the traditional sense, as those fees are still paid out of the respective water and sewer enterprise funds. So, excuse me, what we would do is cover those out of our general fund balance, a little different than just a standard fee waiver that we could do administratively. This is similar to some other projects we've seen recently of similar nature, and this includes the Casa project off the bypass, as well as the residences at Dry Cedar Creek Affordable Development that's just about to be completed. The only difference I'll mention from the staff report I had in work session was I actually misquoted the fee waivers that we're doing administratively. In that staff report, I neglected to account for the fact that VOA is a nonprofit, and nonprofits don't actually have to pay our city construction use tax. By that, I mean that they are exempt from that. So the, the building permit fee and plan check fees being waived administratively total $48,469, excuse me, $48,469. That's a different number than what I had in the previous staff report, which reflected $161,000 total of administrative fee waivers. So just wanted to indicate that, just for clarity, for the public's sake and transparency. All that said, it is still staff's recommendation that council consider this fee, utility fee waiver request, which will improve upon and provide some much-needed senior affordable housing within Montrose. With that, I'm happy to open it up to questions. We do have the applicant on the line that, if you have any questions for them, if you'd like them to speak, they could certainly add to what I said.
Questions, council? Comments?
Well, I would add a comment that we have made it a kind of a prerogative, or not prerogative, an imperative of our council to start looking at possible ways to help with affordable housing and senior housing. And this one really clicks both boxes. So I'm pretty excited to see this coming forward.
Further comment?
Jace, just for clarification, but we're still talking the same amount of money that's going to be in this motion that's going to be made, right? You quoted new monies added, but it doesn't change this.
Correct. So the request that came for work session is no different than the request this evening. The only thing I was clarifying was the administrative fee waivers that we would be providing, and I just neglected the fact that VOA is a nonprofit who's exempt from our city construction use tax. So in theory, that, yeah, that's just taken off the board, but no difference from the request at work session.
Thank you.
I'll call for public comment, but I think most of our public has left, but I still will accept public comment. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve tap fee waivers totaling $121,737.80 for the Volunteers of America Rendezvous Development Project at 2366 Robbins Way as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
I seem to have a lot more interest in Elmer Halt, you know. More near and dear to your heart.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item number eight, city council consideration of Resolution 2024-09, authorizing the City of Montrose Police Department to file an application for a victim assistance law enforcement veil grant through the Seventh Judicial District Victims Assistance Board for the total of $55,150 to cover a portion of both the current victim advocate's salary and a new victim advocate's salary, authorizing the chief of police to act in connection with the application and to provide such additional information as required, authorizing the city manager, chief of police, and finance director to sign the grant application and reporting documents. And I'll turn this over to Chief Hall.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor and city council. You kind of just stole my thunder, Mr. Mayor. That's what I was going to present tonight. We already discussed this in work session. I would just like to note, full transparency, the veil board has let us know that this go-around of funding, no different than VOCA, could see some cuts. And so while we're applying for $55,150 to fund a portion of both our victim services coordinator and victims advocate, we may, if approved, not receive the full funding amount. We don't know yet. We don't know how that, those funds will be dispersed. We are looking for additional grant funding, possibly through the State of Colorado's opioid grant program, but more to follow on that. So with that, we would request approval to pursue this grant through the veil board and move forward.
Thank you, sir. Questions, comments?
I'm just going to point out that we have been using this program for several years, as I recall.
Yes, we've been using this program actually since I first started as a police officer. Just for public edification, a victim's advocate is a statutory requirement for all criminal justice agencies, which then kind of puts us at odds a little bit when we're, we're told we get potential funding cuts. So again, we'll kind of see how that goes, but it is statutorily required for our agency to fund these positions, or have these positions available. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, as a recipient of the services of the victim's assistance with the family member, it was very comforting to have somebody come over and, and great to use, you know, made that kind of made it a little bit more palatable to handle, and their constant checking and assistance, from my personal experience, was greatly appreciated. And so I'd like to thank them personally for the job that they do, and I'd like to recommend that we all approve.
Thank you. For your comments, Councilman Yuliberry. Other questions, suggestions, comments? Any public comment?
I make the motion.
As I make the motion that we approve, Resolution 2024-09 as presented. I'll second that.
There's been a motion and a second. Please vote.
I don't have my vote screen yet. There we go.
Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Chief Hall. Next on the agenda is item number nine, city council consideration of Resolution 2024-10, a resolution of the city council of the City of Montrose, Colorado, authorizing the filing of the Colorado State Forest Service Urban and Community Forestry Grant Application for the purposes of procuring partial funding for a city forester position in the Parks Division of the City of Montrose, Colorado. And that will be presented by Parks Superintendent Dan Payne and Community Development Specialist Christopher Ottinger.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Yes, the Parks Division is requesting approval to apply for a Colorado State Forest Service Colorado IRA Urban, Urban and Community Forest Grant. The purpose of this grant is to partially fund a city forest position that will focus on urban forestry within the city limits, especially in the areas identified as disproportionately impacted under the Federal Justice Forty Initiative. This grant will provide partial funding for the position over a five-year period, and no matching funds are required as the expenses will be reimbursed. The new position will involve managing the existing tree trimming and replacement program, overseeing contractors for tree work on city-owned trees, facilitating community outreach and education in line with the Tree City USA requirements, monitoring crew and volunteer hours for the Tree City USA application, and creating a park tree planting program. They'll also be seeking additional grant funds for maintaining the urban forests. City staff recommends that the city council approve the submission of an urban and community forest grant application for $250,000 to support the establishment of the new city forester position within the Parks Division. The grant application deadline will be July 31st. We'll have notice awards September 1st. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
One thing that we pointed out in the work session was that this position would be a certified arborist.
Yes.
So that that person has a great deal of training and knowledge about our trees.
Yeah, I think this is a great thing.
I had a few questions, and you answered them all. Thank you. Sorry.
That's all right. Further comment, question? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
As a member of the Tree Board, I'd like to make the motion, please, to adopt Resolution 2024-10 as presented. Thanks, Dan.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. And the motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item number 10, city council consideration of the purchase of Tyler Technology Software for Montrose Municipal Court for the total first-year cost of $79,419. And this will be presented by Municipal Court Judge Erin Maxwell, Lead Court Clerk Jody Moreland, and City Clerk Lisa Del Piccolo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council. We are asking for city council to approve the purchase of the Tyler Technology Core software. It is an initial amount of the $79,419, and then there, of course, are annual fees following that. My understanding is that's not something that we, we need to seek approval for at this point. But just to be upfront, it's obviously something where there's ongoing costs. But we do believe there's ongoing benefits to certainly the court and all of the departments that the court works with. In the work session, we did get a chance to talk through how that's going to benefit the police department, the legal team, the court, and certainly our citizens to be able to have access to records and a better education about what the court does. So if there are any follow-up questions, we are happy to answer those at this point. I do believe that the legal team has had an opportunity to review the contract that was proposed as well, and they haven't brought forth any concerns that have concerned us at this stage in the game. But we will still work with them, because obviously, we're asking for approval, but if there is something that comes to light that is concerning, that doesn't mean we move forward with it. But that's, that's where we are now, as I understand it. So we're happy to answer any questions. So we're happy to answer any questions at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, Council? Comments?
It must have taken 100 lawyers a month to put this thing together.
Agree.
I did have a couple of questions. It's talking about their site access, if they have access to our information and everything, or from a legal standpoint, Chris, do you have any concerns with any of that?
No, excuse me. No, it's really going to be similar to the current software that we have. It's kind of a necessary evil to, you know, have this data out there, but it is with a reputable, so long as it's with a reputable company, you're, you know, it's the best you can do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of Tyler Technology Software from the Montrose Municipal Court for the total first year cost of $79,419 as presented.
I'll second.
Great, we have a motion and a second, please vote. And that motion passes unanimously. Moving on, excuse me, moving on to item number 11, City Council Consideration of an IT Purchase to Upgrade Network Firewall Hardware and Licensing for Both the City Hall and PD Networks with a Total Amount of $70,127.82. And for that presentation, we have Information Services Director Greg Story.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thanks for having me. I'm here to talk about the cool world of firewalls. I'll stick to my script because otherwise I'll nerd out and we'll be here forever. Our firewall vendor is interested in upgrading all of their clients to the current generation of hardware. In order to do so, they're offering the new hardware deeply discounted. Typically, we have a life, six-year lifecycle for these particular pieces of hardware. We have two installations of these, City Hall and PD, and they're four and three years into their lifecycle respectively. The existing hardware we purchased for $20,000 per unit, about give take, so that's, you know, two at the city and then two at PD. The discounted price that we're being offered by the vendor is $7,998.79 per device, so incredible discount. This new hardware, as well as being new hardware, comes with additional tools, which will help us keep our network secure. In addition to the additional tools, the annual licensing escort is calculated based on the original hardware purchase price, so since we're getting this deeply discounted, our ongoing licensing will be discounted as well, so that'll add to future savings. The total cost for the four firewalls, along with the licensing and support, is $70,127.82. This includes $40,000 that we have already budgeted this year for licensing and support. So that just leaves remaining $30,127.82. This money would come out of the IS Fund, which we already have collected for this purpose. It just wasn't budgeted for because we hadn't planned on making this replacement this year. As of today, the 2024 budget for the, or the IS budget, looks like we'll be able to absorb this extra cost, but that doesn't mean that I may not be coming back to you later this year for something I'll budget ask. So any questions?
I would just point out that that's a reasonable price for what it can cost if somebody hacks into our system and we have to pay them to get back on.
You know, it looks like a big number until you get that phone call in the middle of the night, and then it makes it a little easier. So yes, agreed.
When I was reviewing the packet, that it sounds like one of those deals that just kind of pops up and is really beneficial and actually not that far off from a normal replacement schedule, so I think it's a great idea.
So Greg, I have a question about, my math tells me that essentially $8,000 per device times four is only $32,000. So what, how do we get from $32,000 to $70,000 plus? Is that all software?
So it's, yeah, it's the licensing and software. So with these, with firewalls, you've got the hardware unit, right? That's what the fiber comes in and then all of the network stuff goes out, and there's the guts inside, and there's the software that's running inside there. And it's constantly updated by the vendor, so when there's a new threat that they find, like, okay, this new executable looks like this and it does these sorts of things, they do an update to their software so that this firewall is looking for this new threat, right? So that's what you're paying for.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions or comments?
I can talk about this all night.
We can ask for public comments, say no public?
We'll approve a purchase of IT equipment and licensing totaling $70,127.82 as presented.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second, please vote. You're a big guy. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is item number 12, which was the item that Mayor Protem spoke to about as an addition to the agenda, and that is City Council Consideration to Give Notice to the Montrose County Clerk Regarding the Addition of a Question on the November 5th, 2024 Coordinated Election Ballot Related to an Increase to the Hotel Room Tax Rate. And for that, I'll turn to City Attorney Chris Dowsey.
Thank you, Mayor Reed, and members of council. Again, I'd like to note that this is late to the agenda. Generally, we have this 24 hours in advance. However, since this was just brought up at work session yesterday, I did need to do some research on the actual procedure to have something added to the ballot. So with that, the city is required to take formal action at least 100 days in advance of any election. The election is going to be coming up on November 5th. That is not a standard or a general municipal election, so the city does have to coordinate with the county. So they have to, 100 days in advance of the election, they have to notify the county that the city is intending on participating in the election by adding a question to the ballot. So 100 days before November 5th is going to be July 26th. This is our last council meeting prior to that date, which is why this was such a rush. And then the city may take formal action three different ways, ordinance, resolution, or motion. Here, we're just going to be doing this by motion. It's not anything legislative, therefore it's not required to be done by ordinance, and a resolution is not required. So if this motion passes, the city will inform the county in writing that it intends to participate in the election by submitting a ballot question. From here, what will happen is the city will enter into an IGA, again, if this motion passes. The city will then enter into an IGA with the county with regards to adding the ballot question. There will be an ordinance and ballot question drafted and voted on, brought before council before the November 5th election. So this isn't actually having the question on the ballot. This is really just getting us set up to get the question on the ballot. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I think, Mr. Dowsey, I think you've said it well. I just want to make it perfectly clear to anyone that might be listening this evening that the public will have an opportunity to comment on the substance of any ordinance that is proposed relative to a ballot issue concerning the lodging tax. And so we are simply authorizing at this point to let the court know, and any substance will be before us at a later date with plenty of opportunity for public comment.
This is correct. Yeah, there will be an ordinance prior to, so there will be a hearing on that ordinance. Additionally, we, for the second reading, we always open to public comment. It's a rarity that that does not happen. So there will be ample time for public comment on this issue. Again, the ordinance, the ballot question, none of this has been drafted yet, so it could not be presented to you today.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add a comment about this is not a tax on the residents of the city of Montrose. This is actually a way of increasing revenues to pay for some of the...
Impacts.
Impact of the visitors and that's, again, it's not a tax on the residents of Montrose.
Thank you, Mr. Yulbert. Any further comment? All right, if not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to give notice to the Montrose County Clerk regarding the addition of a question on the November 5th, 2024 Coordinated Election.
Second. And before I call for the vote, let me, for the record, state that I did not ask for public comment because visually I do not observe any members of the public. But having said that, if I have missed somebody, please accept, we will accept public comment a bit out of order if there is any. Not seeing any, then I'll call for a motion on the vote, or a vote on the motion.
I will second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Dowsey. That concludes the action items on tonight's agenda, and the following item is Staff Reports, and for that I will call on our Finance Director, Shani Wittenberg, for the Sales Use and Excise Tax Report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Oh.
I can read that.
You can?
That's a problem.
I can't do this.
Let's try that again. Do what? She was just being a challenge. We have a short meeting.
Turn your computer upside down. Or stick it in the mirror.
This guy gonna come fix it?
How'd you? Pretty good trick. How'd you? 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 Thanks for the entertainment.
Usually, I told Jace I didn't want to sit by him.
He said we don't have fun at this moment. Was that the report? Was that the report? Was that the report? Was that the report? Was that the report?
All right, here we go. Sales and use, sales use and excise tax report for May of 2024 compared to May of 2023. Okay. General Fund collects 3% sales tax. In May of '24 compared to May of '23, retail sales tax is up 2.5%. Construction use tax down 3.5%. Use and auto use tax down 12.2% with total collections of 1.3% and a positive budget variance of 3.1%. Year-to-date, sales and use tax compared to year-to-date through May of 2023, retail sales tax is up almost 5% or $467,000. Construction use tax up 24.4% or $43,000. Use and auto use tax up 7.2% or $45,000 with a total collection at 5.4% or just about $555,000. Budget variance is positive, 6.8%, or about $690,000 more has been collected through May than we budgeted in 2024. Public Safety Sales and Use Tax is collected at 0.58%, so that's in addition to the 3% and it was effective January 1st, 2020. May Sales and Use Tax Compared to May of 2023, retail sales tax is at 3.4%. Construction use tax is down almost 50%. Use and auto use tax down 12.2% with total collections down 1.6%. A positive budget variance of almost 3%. So we're still good as far as the budget goes, but this slide definitely looks dooming. Year-to-date, Sales and Use Tax for the Public Safety Fund, retail sales tax is at 5.2% or $95,000. Construction use tax is down almost 40% or $34,000. Use and auto use tax up 7.2% or $9,000 with total collections at 3.4% or just about $70,000. Budget variance is positive year-to-date to 7.4% or $146,000 more has been collected than we budgeted in 2024. The Montrose Recreation District, the city agreed after a vote of the people to collect 0.3% and send it to the REC District to help them with the Community Recreation Center. It's crazy that it's been 10 years, but we've been collecting every month, and in May, we collected $229,960 or 1 point, negative 1.6% from last year. So definitely not as good as May of 2023, but not terrible. Year-to-date, we've collected just over $1 million and up 3.4% year-to-date through May of 2023 or about $36,000. Excise taxes adds 0.9% for hotel and 0.8% for restaurant. May excise tax collections compared to May of 2023, hotel excise tax is actually down 0.3%, restaurant excise tax is at 5.2% with total collections up 4%, positive budget variance of almost 10%. Year-to-date, hotel excise tax is at 10.1% or about $5,000. Restaurant taxes at 3.8% or about $10,000 with total collections up just about 5%. Total $15,000. Budget variance is positive at 10.2% or $30,000 more has been collected than we budgeted. Retail sales enhancement, this is the portion of the vendor's fee that the vendors voted to give up to help them promote their businesses. The city does this promotion for them. Retail sales enhancement collections compared to 2023, May, we collected $53,597 or 2.6% more than we did in May of 2023. Year-to-date, we've collected $261,644. It's just up 5% or $12,000 from year-to-date, May of 2023. And with that, I will entertain any questions you may have or...
Any questions, Council?
I'm almost afraid to turn my microphone on. I'm almost afraid to turn my microphone on.
Mine didn't kick back.
Just kind of for point of clarification, that when you're mentioning the hotel and ex, hotel excise tax, that is the item that we're talking about for the potential ballot issue, just for clarification for the public.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the report?
I would make one comment. I've heard from a couple people recently that they, they thought the city was paying for the REC District. I tried to explain to them that we just collect the taxes, that it's a separate district, so in case that comes up again, we do not pay for it.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments on the report? If not, thank you, Shani. Although this staff report is not on the agenda, I think we all just received an email from Mr. Scheid, who is prepared to give us a facade design update on City Hall, which comes as a surprise because you said you wouldn't be ready.
I'm quicker than I thought. So, yeah, I have an update or a follow-up from our work session with some renderings of the new City Hall facade, so I thought it would be a good time to share those with you and kind of discuss the, the new facade look, so I'm showing on the monitor here this, obviously from the front side of the building, there are really no change since our last discussions about this facade project. Obviously, we're progressing with the construction, but no change in the design so far. Where you'll see the change is on the west side of the building or the right side of this photo. You'll see that the facade color there has changed a little bit, and actually the second image here shows this a lot better. This is looking at the building from the cascade side of the building, and this facade that is a slightly different color is the facade that was on this building originally in 1947. So this, that is the original construction of this, of this building, and this was covered up in the '60s, followed several renovations into the '80s, but the white fluted block that was over this was installed in the 1960s, and we were really unsure of the condition of this before starting the design, so the original design that we showed a few months ago included a new facade over this area, but as we uncovered it, the condition of it is actually in really good shape, and we find it to be an interesting feature of the building and kind of a way to highlight some of the history on the corner. It also helps us to change the facade type a little bit, to break up the space, and so it's not all one monolithic type of facade. It actually creates a little bit of separation and makes the space a little more interesting. So we're moving forward or planning to move forward this kind of new concept of design in that this one piece of the wall would be left, as shown here, would be the 1947 version of this building, and then each end of it may be actually a little bit where there's kind of some broken brick, and we'll leave it that way, we'll paint to make it look nice, but it is meant to kind of highlight that this is a different facade and is not, has not been recently installed. It was, again, kind of found underneath of the old white fluted block, so this photo shows a few other small elements that'll go on there as well, the sign on the corner of the building, something we're still working on design on, but this is a pretty close rendering of what we're thinking it will look like. Wayfinding signage right there on the corner of the street. You may notice that the old traffic signal pole is gone, it's been removed, and obviously we won't be putting that back, and so the whole corner kind of becomes more open and has obviously a new facade all the way around. So anyway, just wanted to share that with you. Here are those, those renderings that I said was going to take me longer, but got it done.
You're a rock star.
Thank you.
The one question I have is, what is the impact on our budget and our expenses by utilizing the existing brick?
That's a great question. I skipped right over that, didn't I? So we won't be having to install the new facade over it. Obviously, there's cost savings in that, that we're not having to pay for the brick and stone to be installed over this. The windows are going to remain, we're obviously putting new windows in what is the old facade. So there's some savings, but there's also additional costs, and that comes on the inside. So the existing ceiling heights in those offices are actually too low right now. These windows are higher than the existing ceiling heights, so we do have to do some work in those existing offices to raise the ceilings to, so that these windows will fit under them. So right now, it's going to be just about a wash. It'll come out to be a near-zero effect on the budget. I don't have an exact number to that yet. We're still completing the final design of this, of this new, new piece, but likely it'll come out to be very close to a, no cost change.
How are we doing on our projected schedule for completion?
Still on schedule, so we're looking at November of this year to be completed. I think it will look finished well before that, as far as the brick and stone will be installed. I think we'll be getting laid into the, you know, fall time with some of the interior finishes and buttoning it up, but, but windows and stone is, we've procured those already. We feel good about them getting here on time, so we would be looking at, yeah, November still for our completion date.
Great. Great job.
My big concern always has been that west building, side of the building. I'm so glad that white's gone.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but when I look at this picture, I see that it's two-toned. Are you really going to have green on the bottom?
So the rendering, it's hard to pick out that color.
Is it going to stay the brick it is now?
Yes, yeah. What you see now, what's exposed on the west is what will be there permanently. The rendering does show a little bit, I mean, the green is a little bit bright there. It's not actually that green.
Thank you.
It'll be a much more tan color like it is now.
Yeah.
He might see me down there painting it.
But, yeah.
You see me with my paintbrush.
Yeah.
Paint murals.
Jim, I believe at the work session, you spoke about the rear of the building would be delayed on doing anything to that until the power line situation was corrected. Is that still?
That's true, yeah. The, the upper portion, so the second-story portion of the alley side, will be delayed for now until we can either relocate or somehow other work around the overhead power lines that are behind the building. It's too close to, to be able to remove windows and install a stucco, so we'll still be able to do all of the lower portion, the first-story section of windows and stucco, and even the under portion that's over the covered parking area, that'll still be completed in this year's project. The part that's delayed will, yeah, depend on the relocation of that overhead power.
Further comments or questions for Jim? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And good job of putting, finishing it up so quickly. Any other staff reports? I believe Mr. Bell is on, does he, does he wish to make any comments?
Since he hasn't chimed in, I'm going to say no.
Well, if he, he can interrupt us, if not, we'll go on to Council comments or reports? Wow. Hearing none, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
We're adjourned.